Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting of the Dover Area School Board. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Delater.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie.
Here.
Mr. Rahouser.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. First, we have our communications period. Gigi, your student board report.
In the elementary report, parent conference were held on October twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and parents had the opportunity to meet with their child's teachers and hear how the students are progressing through the school year. The conferences were well attended in elementary buildings. Our elementary students were able to participate in this, in the year's scholastic book fair. Students were given a lot of amount of money from the PTO as well as money they brought to purchase books and small items to further increase students' interest in reading. In the secondary report, District Seven Choir auditions were held for high school students in October twenty-six. District Seven is comprised of eight counties and hundreds of students. In their voice parts, Owen Davis came in first, and Ronan Maylie came in twenty-second. Only the top twenty-five students for each voice parts are invited to participate in the District Seven Choir. Owen and Ronan will represent Dover at the District Seven Choir Festival in January. The engineering students participated in the annual York County High School Pumpkin Chunkin Competition. Our teams placed sixth and seventh out of twelve teams. FFA National Convention was held on October twenty-ninth to the thirty-first. We placed thirty-fourth out of forty-seven in the equine judging, and FFA hosted the Green Hand Chapter Degree Reception on November thirteenth. Twelve students earned their Green Hand degree and seven students earned their chapter degrees. Nine Skills USA students attended the Gettysburg Leadership Conference on November thirteenth through fifteenth. The Fall Sports Award Nights were held on November sixth. All students, all athletes were recognized for their participation. Seven high school, Dover High School students participated in the Central York Fitness Competition on Saturday, November sixteenth. The Powderpuff Game was rescheduled for Thursday, November fourteenth at six P.M. The Skills Leadership Conference was rescheduled for November thirteenth through the fifteenth. Students of the month for October were held, were celebrated with a light breakfast and presented a certificate for their accomplishments on November first. The freshmen were Caitlin Lyard and Grace Carpenter. The sophomores were Abdon Ramos, Rodriguez, and Stephanie Lloyd. The juniors were Ryan Lemenzo and Eli Slothauer, and the seniors were Lydia Lehman and Silas Barnes. The fall play, The Line, The Witch in the Wardrobe, will be held on Friday, November twenty-second and Saturday, November twenty-third. Performances begin promptly at seven P.M. Tickets can be ordered by calling in or by emailing dovertickets@gmail.com. DECA will travel to district competition on November twenty-sixth. Over fifty students will compete in multiple events. DECA will represent their ALS project. All students will take a two-hour written business knowledge exam while in attendance. Dover Intermediate School Student Council thanked our bus drivers with a mini pumpkin and a note thanking them for being the pick of the patch. All seventh and eighth students participated in Junior Achievement Yes Day on November first. Students had opportunities to learn about key issues surrounding careers and financial responsibilities. Seventh and eighth grade distinguished honor roll and honorable students were able to participate in the Snow Truck Social Hour as a reward for their excellent academic work. National Junior Honor Society will be inducting new members on December ninth, twenty nineteen. And in athletics, the following fall athletes were named the YAI AA Division All-Star Teams. In girls soccer, Sierra Miller, first team Division Two, and Maya Fetrow, second team Division Two. In boys soccer, Jackson Barrage, first team Division Two, Jaylen Bronson, and Charles Ebson and Owen Davis were second team Division Two. Coach Matt Spar was co-coach of the year in Division Two. In football, first team Division Two, Austin Campbell for offensive and defensive line, Shane Kleinsten for wide receiver and linebacker, second team Justin Johnson quarterback, Brandon Sersky wide receiver, and Tanner Linker safety. Honorable mention Carson Snellbaker as tight end and defensive end, Seth Kennedy and Jake Snellbecker as offensive lineman. The girls tennis team received the YAI AA Division One Sportsmanship Award. And in boys soccer, was the recipient of the sportsmanship award for Division Two from the officials.
Any questions for Gigi? As usual, a lot of exciting things happening with our students, a lot of recognition for them. Keep up the good work out there. Thank you, Gigi. Okay, well, we've right into our presentations and celebrations tonight. Our first one is our responsive classroom presentation from Dover Elementary.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen on the board. Jen, are you going to be able to do the videos from there, or is it?
Somebody, uh, she has it. The click.
So when she clicks on it, that'll play the video?
Oh, the video.
The video, yes.
There's videos embedded in the presentation. I don't think I can use this one.
Okay.
Like, do I?
There you go. Okay, so I get the boring slide, which is the way it should be. And also, apparently, Mrs. Spar said to the kids, "Don't put too many words on the slides," and I wasn't there for that part either. But, real quick, I'm going to give you an overview. As you know, we are currently using the Danielson Framework for Educator Effectiveness in the Dover Area School District, and in that framework, there are four domains. And in those domains, there are twenty-two components, and that's how we evaluate the teachers and the staff in the Dover School District. That's a little background on this. And the purpose of tonight's presentation, students will share how many of the district initiatives, the initiatives that we've taken on over the past couple of years, transpose into the five components of Domain Two. So we're going to talk a little bit about Domain Two tonight, and how the things that we do in the district fall into that domain. I did list the five components that fall under Domain Two, so creating an environment of respect and rapport, establishing a culture for learning, managing classroom procedures, managing student behavior, and the last one is organizing physical space. So those are the five components that make up Domain Two. And with the boring slide done, I'm going to turn it over to the Dover Elementary Student Council.
Every morning before we start class, we have morning meeting. We think morning meeting is beneficial because you get to greet and talk to the people that you will be with for the day. During morning meeting, we do handshake greetings, and we go over our agenda for the day, and we do fun activities to greet other students.
Closing circle. At the end of the day, we go to our homeroom, and we have closing circle. We think it is good to have a closing circle because you get to share how your day went, and if you had a bad day, you have people to support you. During closing circle, we go over topic, question, and answer, and close and grows.
Close and grow, close, what? Close and grows are, like, to talk about your day, like, if you had a glow, it would be something that you did good today. But if you had a grow, it would be something that you need to work harder on and do better.
We went around and interviewed students around our school and asked them why we, why they thought morning meeting and closing circle were important.
Because people get to greet each other and then know each other.
I think it is important because we get to say hi to everybody, and it's a way to provoke thought and get the day started.
I think morning meeting is important because it sort of just gets you, like, ready for school.
Why do you think closing circle is important?
I think closing circle is important to talk to your class and your teacher about what, what your day was about.
Because it's a very good way to, like, wrap up the school day.
I think closing circle is important because it wraps up the day, and it gives you a review of, like, what you did, like, today.
Morning announcements. What do our announcements do for the school?
Inform. The morning announcements inform everybody about what's going on in our school throughout the day and week. Start the morning off on a good note. They start the morning off with a positive message, which sets the kids up for success throughout the day. Entertain. They make everybody laugh, but they are also very informative, which is a key factor to having good morning announcements. Kids look forward to them. They are something the kids look forward to in the morning because of the entertainment factor and humor found in them. The announcements are very important for our school for many reasons, between getting information out and starting the day off on a good note. And this is kind of like behind the scenes, and the welcome to ew. Ew stands for every student, every day, whatever it takes, which kind of means when you come to school, you want to persevere through challenges that you may face, face throughout the day. And the other pictures of the green stain are kind of what we film on, and what's the word is kind of a word we use every day to kind of get the kids familiar with the different words that they can use throughout their lives. And then, this is what our head, kind of like our head main guy of media club thinks about the announcements.
Mr. Ekinhoff at our school is the librarian, but also helps with the media club, and he would have said that it's totally children-run, from the broadcasting to the reporting, to going out into the classrooms, to taking the pictures of kids' birthdays, and they just do a really great job. It's another, like, leadership role position in our school. All right, you and me.
Chill space. So the purpose of chill space is to help you regroup and refocus mentally and emotionally before losing control. Use the chill space when you experience uncomfortable feelings. Stay in the chill space until you're calm and able to refocus, about two to three minutes. So the, how are you feeling, the chart scale, when you go back to the chill space, you'll be, um, yellow, orange, or red, and, um, when you get done with the chill space, you should be in the blue. So I went around interviewing some teachers and asking them about their chill space and, um, what their class, like, how long they stay back there, what they use the chill space for, why they have it. So Ms. Bennet's class said, "We sit down, and if in a bad emotion, we get ourselves out of that mindset." Ms. Chap, Ms. Chapman's class said, "There's a timer for one minute. They think about why they're in that mood and get themselves out of it." Ms. Embolz's class said they go for two minutes, and, and they also said if someone is mean to you, you could go back there and be refocused. Ms. Nace's class said they don't have a timer, and they go back to think about what they did. Ms. Freeman's class said they go back for one to two minutes when someone gets mad. They get them out of that mindset, one to five minutes. A lot of kids get stressed to work out emotions. Two minutes when they need to be refocused.
The students also learned that this is not a punishment in any way, and we don't introduce this right away in the beginning of the year. We do it after we've gained a rapport with the students and the respect of the students, and they learn to trust us. So if we send them to the chill space, they know we're doing it because it's what they need, and it's been very successful. We introduced the school year with just talking about feelings and emotions and letting them know that all feelings are okay. There are feelings that are comfortable and feelings that are uncomfortable, and we continue to provide them with strategies for working through those uncomfortable feelings, right? So when they go to the chill space...
These are some tools that are in the chill space. So we have items that you can just, like, flip over and look at and wait till they calm. This, you just shake up, and when it calms, this basically expresses your emotion, ugh, emotion, and once it's calm, that's your...
I'm his Dana White today. So, like, we have these little marble things. These are just kind of little fidget things, and some people just kind of wiggle them back and forth.
And these are items that you can squeeze or relieve stress for one to two minutes.
Yeah. Play-Doh's really popular. Even in fifth and sixth grade, they like to build things back there.
And we took a, or I took a video of, um, a second grader in Ms. Nace's class.
The second grader was just demonstrating how they go. When you, when you tell a student chill space, or timeout, or whatever term they're used, the kids go. There's no type of discussion. They know they need to go there and get in a good place, and then afterwards is when the discussion happens. So again, that's been very effective in all of the age levels. Thank you, Patrick.
Mrs. Davis, a fifth grade teacher at our school believes that morning greetings are important because it's a way for her to gauge how her students are doing in the morning. A first grade teacher at our school, Mrs. Stoll, believes that greeting her students in the morning is important.
Guys, so this year Dover Elementary did a Unity Day. We actually signed up for a national Unity Day. We all...
Mrs. Stoll, why do you think that greeting people at the door is important?
I think greeting students at the door is important because it gives them a positive start for their day.
Our gym teacher, Mr. Enlik, greets students as they get off the bus every morning. Here's why he thinks that is important.
Mr. Enlik, why do you think that greeting people at the door when they get on the bus is important?
Uh, I just like to start their day off with a smile, a high five, or handshake, and hopefully when they come in, they're coming in happy and ready to have a good start of their day at school.
Morning greetings are important to building classroom communities because it starts students' days off in a positive way and lets other students and teachers know how others are feeling.
Good morning, ladies. Good morning, staff. Good morning, more here today.
Unity Day helped build classroom communities and showed how to tell what your peers are feeling and how you can help them when they feel negative emotions. This is how our guidance, guidance counselor, Mrs. Knowles, thinks Unity Day built classroom communities.
Hold on. Guys, so this year Dover Elementary did a Unity Day. We actually signed up for a national Unity Day, and we all wore orange on that day. And it's a day that we all come together to fight against bullying. At Dover Elementary, we had an opportunity to have an entire half-day, and during that half-day, the teachers taught lessons on empathy and understanding each other's feelings. We also did a school-wide mural where everybody put hands on a wall to represent kindness and acceptance of others. The Unity Day ended up being a really great, fantastic way for the whole school to come together against bullying.
During Unity Day, students signed a pledge saying that they would stand up against bullying and being inclusive of others. Younger grades also drew pictures to show what negative and positive emotions are.
I think it has to be off the play button.
What? The what?
And Mr. Smith's fourth grade class laid a quote of the day. This is how some of his previous students and current students feel quote of the day helps build classroom communities and relationships between students.
I would say quote of the day builds classroom communities and the bond between students in the classroom.
Because it helps us, like, understand each other more and emphasize.
Um, like, it would show how to be closer to each other and be friends and not be mean to each other.
Quote of the day helps us, like, know what other people are going through because in the beginning, just because I had no idea Mr. Smith was, and all my other, the people in my class. Now I know what they're going through, and I know how to get their hopes up so they, like, they feel better.
Some other quotes that Mr. Smith's students have come up with are, "It costs nothing to be nice. If you're lucky enough to be different, don't change. And people will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but they'll never forget how you made them feel." Mr. Smith's favorite quote of the day is, "Everybody you meet is going through something you know nothing about."
Hi, I'm Drew. In our school, kids love doing partner work and group work, and they get to do it every day. We do it so students can have more information to work with, having the ability to work with others and build communication skills, and have some fun depending on what they're working on and who they're working with. I interviewed a second grader named Lucas and our school counselor, Mrs. Knowles, asking them if they think group and partner work is important and if they enjoy doing it. Here is what they responded with. Lucas said, "I think group work is important because some people need help, and it's important to help them." He said that he also likes it because it's nice to help people. And Mrs. Knowles said, "I think it's important because in real-life situations, you have to work with others a lot, and you have to learn the skills of being a good listener. I like it because you can get things done quicker, more efficiently, and you have more ideas to work with." Here are some of the other pictures I took at our school while kids were doing partner group, partner work and group work.
Spirit days are important because they give Dover Elementary students something to look forward to and allow students to show their creativity. If students have good behavior on the bus, in the classroom, or even at Encore, it will give the students, it will allow the students to have spirit days.
Encore enrichment allows students to do individual projects and activities two days every school week. This gives students a chance to express their creativity. Click on the video above for more information. Here is an interview with Dover Elementary's librarian, Mr. Ekinhoff.
What is the purpose of Encore enrichment?
The purpose of Encore enrichment is to take the kids further. Kids are able to choose something individually that they're interested in and pursue it. They might do a little research with it. They might just engage with it. They might learn more about it and then hopefully use it. It's all about creativity. I want kids to create and enrich them.
All right. Thank you.
So myself along with Mrs. Spar meet with these kids, um, pretty often lately, but in getting ready for this presentation, but at least once or twice a month. So we have a lot of more things to plan for Dover Elementary, but I want to introduce you. So, this message is brought to you by Samuel, Xander, Jacob, Patrick, Mia, Ella, Emma, Sage, Drew, Alondra, and Eric, Elena. You did an awesome job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I want to thank all of the students. I know it's not easy to get up in front of a group of adults like this, and you'd all did a fantastic job tonight. Let's give them another round of applause. Mrs. Davis and Mrs. Spar and Mr. Rup, thank you for all that you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we will now move into our audit presentation from Boyer and Ritter, and I understand if Mrs. Benko needs to go to her chill space at this point right now. Jen, are you ready? Are you, you're out of the chill space? You're good to go? This is a glow moment for Jen, for Jen tonight versus grow. So, my name's Matt Wildison. I'm a principal at Boyer and Ritter. We're responsible for your external financial statement audit. I, I have oversight over our government services group, and I'm here tonight to review the financial audit with, with you and the public present. I would first like to start by thanking the board for the opportunity to provide audit services to the, to the school district. Also like to acknowledge Jen Benko, Jen Lepo, and the rest of the school staff and everybody that was involved, first for their diligent work throughout the year, as well as for their assistance in preparation for the audit process and being helpful to us through, throughout that. Our audit engagement can be kind of broken into two yet overlapping, two separate yet overlapping audits. We both, we conduct both a financial audit as well as a compliance audit. The, the results of the audit are found in the documents here in front of you tonight. The, the first I'd like to point out is, it's a, it's a letter right in the very front of your, of your packet. It's called a required communication letter. It's to inform the board of significant matters related to the financial audit. Going to highlight a couple of those, first of which, we, we identify the respective responsibilities of management, as well as us as your auditors. The management, your responsibility, as well, under the oversight of the board, is to prepare your annual financial statements, as well as the notes. Our job is to simply express an opinion based on, based on our audits. Secondly, we do identify that there are some audit adjustments that are made throughout the audit process, but none of those adjustments had a significant effect on the financial reporting processes that the school district has. The inference there is that, you know, the information you're getting, that what we're seeing from a financial reporting standpoint, that the information you're getting on a routine basis, on a monthly basis, that you're evaluating, that there's a strong, there's good structure underlying that. So that gave us no, no cause for, for any concern there. Additionally, we noted there were two audit standards that were, or accounting standards that were implemented in the current year. Neither of them had a significant effect on your, on the school district's financial reporting. We do note two, two standards that are coming up. One that has to do with fiduciary activities as well as leases. Both of those will have effect on the way the school district's reports their financial statements. So that's just something to kind of keep in mind. The final, an important note in the required communication letter talks about, hey, how did the audit go? We reported in there. We had no disagreements with management. We did not encounter any kind of difficulties during the audit process. Our, our team felt as though they were provided full access to the school's records and staff to complete our audit process. Now I'd like to move on to the larger document in front of you, which is the annual financial report. Within this eighty-page document, there are three reports in there that are, that are Boyer and Ritter's. So if you want to turn with me after the table of contents to the first report, this is the, this is our, our opinion on your financial statements. And so what we do in here is we basically lay out that, we put in here, we believe our, we state our opinion that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. So that's, that's basically an unmodified or a clean opinion. It's the highest level opinion that a CPA firm can issue on a set of financial statements. So that's, that's basically an unmodified or a clean opinion. It's the highest level opinion that a CPA firm can issue on a set of financial statements. So congratulations to you on that. The second thing that we do point out is we talk about, hey, what's included in your audit? There's two different sets of financial statements in here that, that we look at, as well as the notes. The first has to do with your fund level statements. I, so it would include, that would be your general fund, your capital projects fund, and your, your food and service fund. And in there, you know, we, that, that information's going to be similar to what you're seeing on a routine and on a monthly basis. The second set of financial statements is reported much like a for-profit organization. It has, it kind of tries to give governmental organizations a long-term view of what your financial picture looks like. In there, you're going to report your capital assets, you know, net of depreciation, you're going to report long-term debt, you're going to report any kind of net pension liabilities that the school district may have through its participation in PISers. So, those couple, those two different statements try to provide both a short-term and a long-term view of the, the district's financial health for, for your, for your review. The, the other piece that is, that we point out in this, in this report is the required supplementary information, including the management discussion and analysis. That's, let's locate it on pages four through eleven. Jen and her team go through and prepare that. You know, it's written for people who are not, I would say, financial people per se, and they just want to read about the school district's financial activities. The one nice thing about that is that they kind of break down what happened during the year from a budget-to-actual standpoint. It does show comparative information, which is something that you're, the rest of this document generally does not do. And, and so it's overall, it's a good read for somebody that's just jumping into this and kind of wants to understand, you know, what's going on, what's going on at the district. The, the, the second report that we look at, or the second audit that we look at is your compliance audit. And that's a combination of two different sets of standards and regulations. One has to do with the uniform guidance that's put out by OMB, or the Office of Management and Budget at the federal level, as well as the government accounting standards that we have to follow. And in there, there's basically two reports that we are required to issue. One has to do with the government accounting standards, and in there, we're required to disclose whether or not there are any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal controls over financial reporting, how you guys come up with this document that we audit. And as I mentioned earlier, when I talked about the, you know, the journal entries and the fact that there were none that were, you know, significant or, you know, gave us cause for concern, that's kind of leading into the fact that in this report, we say that there were, there was nothing that needed to be disclosed there. So you get a clean opinion or a clean report there as well. The final area that we look at has to do with your federal compliance of your federal programs. Now, I think you received last year over two million dollars in federal awards of like two point four. And so we're required to go in on an annual basis and look at your federal programs. This year, we looked at the child nutrition cluster, which would be your, your school, your school lunch program, the money you receive to help, you know, your, your cafeteria fund provide lunches to, you know, I would say, lower-income children. So we went through and audited that program in accordance with the guidelines that the Department of Agriculture and the Department of Education laid out for us. And we are pleased to issue a clean opinion on that as well this evening. So, hats off to Jen and her team and the people who are running the child nutrition program here at the school district. But we kind of follow a program to test the various elements of compliance with regard to that, and they have passed tonight with flying colors. In conclusion, I just want to say thank you again to the, to the school board and entertain any questions that you may have. Anybody? Okay.
Just want to make a comment that, you know, this, this document, this whole process that you go through every year, it's, it's no easy task and it's, it doesn't all come together at the last minute. There's a lot of effort, and I know we've said it before, but the last few years, we've had very good findings from your audit review, and it's worth noting that there's a lot of people that work very, very hard to make that happen. That's, that's not by happenstance that, you know, it's, that that's happening. So, my hat's off to you Jen and your team. I think we as a board are all very grateful. Our community should be also very grateful to have an administration and a financial piece of that that works very hard on their best interests to manage the funds that they have and do it in a, in a very fiscally responsible way.
I would add, you know, you probably, you know, you're my second audit presentation overall. We do over twenty schools that we do work for. So the timeliness of the, of the audit report is also, you know, you're, you're, you're at the head of the class in that regard as well in terms of getting everything done and wrapped up and getting, getting in front of you, so.
Good job.
I would just like to thank Jen Lepo because she put in the majority of the hard work for this. So, thank you so much for all your hard work.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Any other questions? Good, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Why are we having Colair boat on us?
I'll keep it moving.
Okay, our next presentation is the two thousand nineteen twenty-three thirty-nine Plan Goals with Mr. Benton.
Good evening, everyone. So this is be short and sweet. Every year, our counselors update their three-three-nine plan goals. So in your board packet, you saw the whole three-three-nine plan, but the most important thing out of that is just their, their goals. So K through six goals. There's actually, at each level, there's three different goals set. There's an academic, social, emotional, and career. So academic ninety percent for K through six is ninety percent of second-grade students will be able to identify and demonstrate teamwork skills. Social and emotional, ninety percent of kindergarten students will be able to identify good choices versus bad choices through role-playing and/or scenarios. And, and for the career goal is ninety percent of six, three through sixth grade students will be introduced to Smart Future's Career Readiness Program. Our seventh and eighth grade level academic is next step students will set at least two academic goals at the beginning of each rotation. Social and emotional, ninety percent of seventh grade students will complete the behavioral health screener through B H Works and debrief with a counselor or social worker. Career, eighty percent of the students will complete at least five career lessons through the Smart Future program. And for our high school goals, academic, forty percent of our class of twenty-twenty-one take the SATs during their junior year. Social and emotional, a hundred percent of the students needing follow-up with the behavioral health screener will occur once during fall and, and once in the spring. And on the career side, a hundred percent of our students complete at least three career-related activities during the nineteen-twenty school year. Any questions or comments towards the three-three-nine plan with their counselors' goals?
What would the career readiness goal for third to sixth grade, what does that look like when, when you're presenting something that young?
Just introduction, you know, what, what type of, of careers, basically what the parents are doing, just, it's, just starting to identify what type of careers. You know, they're asking them, what their family members, what are they doing, and just start talking about that. So it's just an introduction. It's very basic, very broad-based, and at the different career paths that may go. Okay?
Thanks.
Yep. Anything else?
Buddy? Okay, thank you, Mr. Benton.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Dr. Maloney with the two thousand eighteen nineteen data presentation.
Now there's warm air. Do you feel that?
It's going to get hot.
Yeah, that's okay.
Use the mic, I can't picture it.
It's actually hot. All right, well, I first, I want to say thank you to my colleagues for allowing me to be the one to do this presentation tonight because it's, it's really a team effort and we know that. You know, Mrs. Krueb is a hands-on superintendent. She's been involved in bringing in instructional strategies, frameworks, and assessments and all types of things. She's actively in the classrooms, doing observations, working with teachers, all of our administrators, teachers, staff, all of our staff, and looking at the social workers and, you know, we can't do all of this without them, our support staff, obviously our students, and then the families that support them because it's really been a lot of work. And the title of the presentation is Achievement and Growth in the Dover Area School District because, I have to click this. You, you know, I, I think we know what achievement is. We look at that and we're talking mostly about our state assessments. And, you know, it's, it's how well, how many students do we have that score proficient and advanced on those assessments at the end of the year, and that's our achievement. But our growth is a little bit different, but equally is important because that's really looking at how students, the progress that they're making, and typically from one year to the next. And there's just so many factors that can play into all of that, and I think it's important, and we know there's a ton of research on economically disadvantaged and the impact that that has on student achievement. And when we look at ours, and I apologize that this is small, but I think you can see it. When you look at how our district has increased in the number of students that we have on pre-reduced lunch, while it's, it's, it's slight, it's steady. It's a steady increase from sixteen-seventeen to seventeen-eighteen to eighteen-nineteen, and that's district-wide at almost forty-seven percent. And we have buildings that are well over fifty percent. And so what we know is that, that that does impact families in some way, shape, or form. It could be access to quality preschool and daycare and, and things like that. It could just be that we have parents working two jobs and maybe aren't home with students, and so there's just many factors that play into that. The other things that we've been looking at, other factors, two hundred and forty-three new enrollments in August. This August of two thousand nineteen, two hundred and forty-three new enrollments. We had two hundred and sixteen withdrawals July first to August thirtieth in two thousand nineteen, as compared to a hundred and twenty-six in eighteen. So what that tells us is that our population is becoming extremely transient and that, that, you know, it's very difficult to educate children when they're moving in, moving out, and, but it's, it's a factor. It's something that, that we have to deal with. And then we had an additional fifteen English-language learners move into the district this year, which is, which is a lot. I mean, that technically could be a teacher. We did plan ahead, if you remember. We budgeted to contract through the IU for half a teacher, and it's a good thing that we did because we're now up to sixty, just about sixty students with two and a half teachers receiving ESL services. So you can see the, the demographic and the factors that go into that. I don't know why I want to do my computer. When you look at our achievement, so this is laid out, this is English Language Arts, and this is grades three through six at the elementary schools and grade seven and eight at the intermediate school. So you look at the achievement, and when you, you do the math there, you're kind of like, yeah, that doesn't do a whole lot. If you, if you add it all up, it's probably flat as far as our achievement. And you see the same thing with math. It's, it's relatively flat when you look at the achievement itself. As we compared ourselves to other school districts, you know, we did see that other school districts maybe had a slight decline, not all of them, but some, where we felt as though we were able to maintain our achievement with all of those factors. We felt that that was actually a, a good thing, that we were able to sustain the achievement. Obviously, our goal is to increase our achievement. And I'll share some information with you about growth, which helps us believe that we're going to continue to increase our achievement. So this is science, and you could, we, we do very well in science, and science is tested in fourth grade at the elementary and eighth grade at the intermediate school. So you can see in some buildings, we had a slight downtick, or in other buildings, we had an uptick, but overall, science remains extremely strong in, in fourth and getting stronger in eighth grade. I'll say that. The Keystone exams, however, you can see that we did have an increase in our achievement in all three areas, and this is grade eleven, you can see. So the actual class that two thousand nineteen, they're our current seniors. That data comes from our current seniors. So with, the way this works is the students will take the Keystone exam at the end of the course. So many of our students could even take the Algebra Keystone in seventh or eighth grade. It just depends on when they take algebra. And then up through eleventh grade. Biology and literature, typically students take those Keystone exams in tenth grade. So all the scores are banked until spring of the junior years, the final time that students can take a Keystone exam. So that's where that information comes from. But as you can see, we had an increase in our achievement in all three Keystones. So SPP, School Performance Profile Scores. So those of you that have been around for a while, you know that we have the School Performance Profile. Now we have P A Ready Index, and then we have Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment System, which is the P VAS, the Growth. So all of those pieces come together, but the School Performance Profile in elementary is based on achievement, growth, attendance, and then participation on the assessment. So those factors play into the SPP, and at the high school, there are other indicators that play into that as well. And the SPP has to stay because it's part of the Educator Effectiveness, the Act Eighty-two. This number actually gets put on every teacher's evaluation, depending on what building they work in. That, that number's associated with their evaluation, that score. So when the P A Ready Index came out, which you're going to hear the principals talk about that in a little bit, about how each of their buildings did on that, which is really the, the new platform, SPP couldn't go away because of educator effectiveness. But when you look at this, you can see that we made great gains at our high school, and Mrs. Weakland's going to share how well we did as far as moving ourselves up in the county with this SPP score. And you can see that North Salem Elementary had some great gains, as did Weiglestown Elementary. So some big improvements in our school performance profile. And every building has something to celebrate. It's just depending on which indicator they have, it may not have moved them up in a school performance profile because of, of how it's weighted or, or the count in a particular subgroup or something like that. But every building does have something to celebrate, but this is pretty amazing for three of our buildings with the increase. And the other ones, again, as I said before, just maintaining where we are, our position. So we're going to talk a little bit about P VAS, and so because that becomes very complicated with the formula and things, I figured the colors is the easiest way to go. If you just look at red, and you can see, when you see red, that's significant evidence that the school or the group did not meet the standard for academic growth. If you see yellow, there's moderate evidence that we did not meet the standard for growth. Green is an indication that we met the standard, so that would be equivalent to one year's worth of growth. So each student did what we needed them to do in that particular grade level. However, when we have an achievement gap, if there's a gap, if we're only growing students one year, we're not closing that gap, if that makes sense. So we really need to be striving for those light blue and dark blue colors because that's moderate evidence that we exceeded the standard, and then significant evidence that we exceeded the standard. So this is a little small for somebody in the back, but that's why I think if you just look at colors, and I have Mrs. Strawsball ready to point if we need her to. So if you look at the very top row, that's math, and it's math, and then it's, it goes vertically, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and then the Keystone exams. So if you look at the top, the, Mrs. Strawsball, would you mind pointing up there? So we're, we're just looking at two thousand nineteen, and if, you can't reach, but two thousand nineteen is actually to the left. If you look at the circle, it's actually to the left there. Every two thousand, so fourth grade two thousand nineteen for the district is green. to the left there. Every two, so fourth grade, 2019, for the district is green, fifth grade math is light blue, sixth grade math is light blue, seventh grade is green, eighth grade is green, and then our Algebra Keystone is light blue. So you look at ELA, we have fourth grade, 2019 is green, fifth grade is dark blue, sixth grade is dark blue, seventh grade we have a red, but we feel like we have some pretty good data to indicate that that's about to change. Eighth grade is light blue, and then our Literature Keystone is dark blue. And remember what dark blue is, significant evidence that we exceeded the growth standard. And then in science, of course, fourth grade, we have dark blue, eighth grade, we have dark blue, and then our biology is green, and we're pleased with all of that. We've really been working on raising our Biology Keystone. So this is another, just different way to show it, but Bobby, can you point to 2019? Can you reach that? Come on, you can do it. You are an athlete. There you go. So if you follow 2019 across, again, it basically shows the same thing for each grade level, but then the cumulative of all grade level becomes, that's math, it becomes a light blue for all of those grade levels. And when we look at ELA, we have the green, the dark blue, dark blue, red, light blue, but a cumulative dark blue in our ELA. And then science, of course, for 2019, we have dark blue in fourth grade and dark blue in eighth grade. So again, I just, that's like exceeding the standard. Thank you. Well, this I think you can see, but these are the Keystone exams, this is Algebra, same thing. You follow seventeen, eighteen, then you look at nineteen, we're at the light blue. And then here's Biology, looks a little Christmasy, but we got the green in there for 2019, and again, we're very excited about that. Achievement is banked, the growth is live, the growth is real-time. So it's all the students who took that assessment in nineteen, they're all factored into the growth standard. So this one's interesting. So Thirty-two in the green, five, and eight in dark blue. And in 2019, how many are in the red? Six. We had seven in the yellow. Thirty-six. Twenty-one. Twenty-one. And twelve. So you So I mean, that's, I think that's pretty incredible to be able to demonstrate that in a two-year span. So again, it's a credit to everyone and all the work that's happening. So these are scatter plots. I got, I think we can see this, yeah. And the reason I'm sharing this is because what, sometimes the way you see the data come out collectively is that they'll post like all the high schools or something in the county, and they'll show you where they appear, or all the middle schools, or something on the scatter plot. So if you look along the bottom, that is the growth index that goes along the bottom, and then along the side, it's achievement. So you want to be in the upper right-hand corner. So this is Algebra One. Right quadrant. And the intermediate school, you see, we have high achievement, but we didn't have as much growth. That's our seventh and eighth graders. We're in that right-hand quadrant. So that's the Algebra Keystone. This is Biology, and you can see we're in that upper right-hand quadrant, high achievement, high growth, and we're going to work on the achievement. And this is the literature, again, the upper right-hand quadrant. This is math, so this is elementary math and intermediate school. So you can see all of our elementary schools are there. And Live Elementary is the only one on the other side of that growth, but they're moving in that direction as well. So we're pleased, and we're pleased with the work that we're currently doing. This is the Language Arts, same thing, all of the buildings and where they appear. And then this is fourth grade science and eighth grade science. So it's really some amazing work that's been done. And what we're going to do is we're going to have each of the building principals talk briefly about their PA Ready Index information, and we're going to start with Mrs. Weakland and the high school.
Good evening, everybody. So a lot of this information is going to be repeated, we will repeat some of this information. As Dr. Maloney was doing this, I was like, I'm presenting the same thing, but I will make it a little bit colorful. I will make it a little bit colorful. So as she said, red was on the bottom, dark blue was on the top, green was in the middle, red, not enough growth and/or achievement, and then dark blue on top was, we had made significant growth. So if we're looking at this, on the left-hand side, that is the ELA, English Language Arts, this is achievement. So this entire slide is about achievement, seventy-nine percent, seventy-nine point-two percent of our students who are going to graduate this year were to still work on our 2030 goal of eighty-one point-one percent. So we are like so close, continued work. Next one is Algebra Math, it is blue. Blue is something to celebrate. We made significant growth in this our 2030 statewide goal, year 2030 goal, and now the challenge is to continue on with that and continue moving forward in that direction. The last one is Biology. If you look at all three subjects, that is the area high school has made significant growth as far as moving in achievement level. I believe the previous year, we were sixty percent, and this year, we made it up to sixty-seven point-five. So we've moved above the statewide average, but as you can tell with the 2030 goal, there's a lot of work to do in that area. Overall, this is great news. As you can see, there's no red. So if there's no red, it is a good thing. The next slide is about growth. It says up there, focus area. Our focus is growth, because the saying at the high school is, growth will do in a lot of areas, but we have to start somewhere. So our focus is growth all the way across. So again, in ELA, on the left-hand and again, science is the area to work on. So the two are blue and one are green. On that note, can we give the high school a huge And having said that, even though this looks really good, the challenge is against to sustain it. In addition to the Keystone scores, the PA Future Ready Index also takes into account on-track measures, which are attendance and graduation rate. So attendance, we went up from seventy-nine percent the previous year to eighty-seven point-six percent. And with the systems that we have put in place this particular school year, we are looking at currently at ninety-eight percent of our students are attending high school on a daily basis. So again, systems are put in place, so it will, this year will actually tell us that whether our systems that we implemented are working or not working. The other thing is very important, high school graduation rate, we are at eighty-four point-eight percent. I know that sounds low, like fifteen percent of our students are dropping out. That's what essentially That is a work in progress. There are many things that we have done, Mr. Perkins and I worked on this year, to clean up our are reporting that data. So that's one factor. The other factor is, I think, this year, more than last year, we are very, we're working with so many different plans to meet the needs of our student, because there's a lot of challenges, there's a lot of mental health issues, and as students are like, well, I'm just going to drop out. In the past, it might have happened. This year, we were like, no. What is the issue? We immediately have a meeting with multiple people in the building, counselor, administration, social workers, just to see what we can do and where we can meet that child, whether it is a career thing that they can do, or whether it's academic. We are really, really trying and not just kind of saying, okay, well, if you're going to drop out, you're going to drop out. No. We're focused on the student. They're not the same. So based on the data that Mr. Perkins and I are seeing this year, this is probably going to be along with attendance for this particular school year. The next thing is SPP across A lot of that, I would say sixty to seventy percent of that is attributed to our growth. A lot of our growth has multipliers, which has given us this. So that's that. And then the last slide, Continued Plans. So we know that we made growth, we know that we made achievement last year, but the work doesn't stop. Work has to continue on, and one of the things our staff says to us, consistency, and making sure that we are carrying on these things year after year. So I kind of divided our initiatives into three areas, academic and career. We have new and/or updated curriculum in pretty much all subjects now, and if it's not there, it will be there probably before the end of the year. We have career lessons, as Mr. Benton talked about in the 339 Plan. Every student in the high school before eleventh grade will have eight artifact, which will help whether it is resume writing, a lot of those things. We also finally have an academy structure. We have six different academies. From the intermediate school, doesn't feel, doesn't, or will not feel like that they're just being put into the high school, and there's no trans Academy is to get the students familiarized with the high school and the culture of the high school, and some of that work has already showed in the first marking period. We have probably the least number of ninth graders fail in their sub, all four subjects this past marking period. So some of that work has shown already, and we'll continue to work with that. Career lessons, course changes, we are working on plans to how to work on remediation for our Keystone Algebra Bio and Lit, with what is essentially means is students who do not pass those Keystone tests, what are we doing with them? Are we putting in plans? So we have a lot of ideas, we just need to solidify those ideas in the next two months and work with them. Last one is CDT, which stands for Classroom Diagnostic Test, which correlates standards-based analysis for students. So every student in ninth, tenth, and/or eleventh grade, if they're enrolled in Keystone subjects, our students at, so it's not too late before they can do anything. School culture, PBIS is a big thing for us this year, where it's still work in progress. Distracted learning, which is essentially cell phones and the earbuds. We have less problems with cell phones this year compared to last year, but it is work in progress. We can't expect our juniors and seniors to say, okay, well, you're not going to use it, we're working on it. The entire staff and the students have seen huge improvement in that along with us. So again, that is a work in progress. The other thing that is happening a lot at the high school, which attributes to the growth and achievement, is professional learning community. We have structures for those communities, whether it is Unity, Safety, MTSS, PBIS, Wellness, and Culture. Work Understanding Data, whether it is P-VAS data, which provides you a child projection for that year, whether it is BT data, simple things at this time. Our task this year is to work with the PSAT, PSAT data. Understanding of how to use it, and what does that mean for them individually and collectively, the students who are sitting in front of them. CDT meetings, same thing, analysis of CDT in specific subjects in the Keystone area. And the last tool that we're working with our staff is EdInsight, which is the data warehouse that we started this year. A lot of our staff is using it specifically for parent and student contact at this time, but they're also using it for data. And they're asking us a lot of questions, so we know that they're, they're like, okay, I want to learn a little more about this, how do I use this better? So again, all, this is just a snapshot of work in progress to sustain what we did last year, so we can continue to move forward. That's all I have for high school.
Thank you. Mrs. Gross, Mrs. Landis, I'm not sure who's speaking. Both?
She's starting.
You have her back, right?
I have her back.
Okay.
Great. So when Victoria and I started two years ago, we came up with a plan that would last five to seven years. We were really quite pleased as we start to see the plan come to fruition, to see some really significant movement in areas already just two years in. So the first thing that we're looking at is our achievement data. So this is achievement towards that 2030 goal that the state has put out. So you can see that in the area of English Language Arts, we're green, we're hitting where we need to be to hit that goal. In the area of math, we're red, we're not quite where we need to be yet to hit that 2030 goal, getting so much closer to the statewide average than where we were in the past. And then in science and biology, again, we're right on track to be able to hit that 2030 achievement goal. So starting to see some greens from straight reds, this was something very good for us, as we really looked into how quickly we're moving through the process that we thought would take a lot That ELA is still our area of concern in growth, and we know that. We have a plan in place in order to address that, with a lot of professional development. Point seven, we need to hit that seventy to get that green. And again, a lot of significant progress in that area, very close to hitting that green. And So we hit that hard in science over the last two years, and we have a hundred percent growth in the area of science. So it's something that we're very proud of, and can only imagine with the pace that we've progressed in the last two years, where we're going to go in the next three years. So I want to have Victoria explain the next part.
Okay, so the red looks pretty bad, right? But look here. This is significant, our SPP. Two years ago, we were right where West York is. Two years ago.
Almost the exact same number.
That's where we were. And in two years, look where we are now.
And I ranked them, just in case you wanted to know. So yes, we are above all these schools.
And please look at who is below us. Only saying. There is some red. We are moving, we are making growth, we're on the way, we have work to do, especially in seventh And I think that in two more years, you're going to see us make even greater gains. So With the red, we're doing pretty good.
And I do think that our SPP really goes to what Dr. Maloney addressed earlier, that we are standing strong and growing. A lot of the schools in the county are diving. So we're really heading in a very positive direction, even if we're just standing in the green, because we're not seeing that great flux, that great flux of the dive come through. So again, at the Dover Intermediate School, we have a lot of work to do, but the message is we're staying the course, we're not changing the course, we're staying the line. So we're going to continue with the plan, we're going to continue with the interventions, the curriculum. The biggest thing that our teachers have adopted and have embraced is the data-driven instruction. We're going to build upon it, and we're going to move on. So stay the course is our message, and you're going to see some pretty phenomenal colors and growth our plan in the next three years. Thank you.
Mr. Root. Mr. Root.
Straders are inundated with a lot of data, and some of that data gives projections on how students will perform on the PSSAs. When at Dover Elementary, we got that data to look at at the beginning of last year, we were very concerned about our percent proficient. Our percent proficient this past year on the PSSAs, which is what's here on this slide, shows that, again, as Dr. Maloney said, we maintained. We, we maintained in ELA with the green. We maintained in math with the green. And of course, we stayed and maintained blue, which is the positive for our science last year on the percent proficient. And of course, we're still above the state average in all three of them. On the next slide, this was our huge positive. As I said, the percent proficient, the projections were a little scary, so we really set a goal for growth last year, and we did it at Dover Elementary. The year before, it was to move to blue in all three of the tested areas, because we showed more than a year's worth of growth in each of those areas.
Good job. Dr. Weesling.
Well, I have to say, blue happens to be my favorite color. So it's not even like we're putting my favorite color up here, but as you, as Dr. Maloney stated earlier, you know, red certainly is not showing that we are moving our kids. And so this is our achievement. So ELA, now within our, this is for the building. So within our grade levels, we certainly had some blues and some greens occurring with both. But overall, we're looking at still that, that summative assessment, that PSSA, which is what this is, still giving us some challenges. And so we are identifying what, what's trying, what is attributing to that. So we've, like everybody else, we're looking at the data. We have so many different sources of, and different pieces of data between PVA's and the SPP and performance profile. We can really start seeing the subgroups of the students, where, how they're performing, which ones are growing, which ones are not. What's positive about, or what I find positive about out of this is that our lower-performing, struggling student subgroups in even here are showing growth. They've, they've improved their performances. So what we want to look at, we want to look at blue, and I attended, participated in a webinar from the IU about the colors and the, you saw those pie. Who's got to be blue? All right? So that's our focus, is we want to look at those lower performer, those struggling students of those quintiles and move. Our quintiles and our, of our, of our performing groups, it is our lower groups that either we are moving to blue or move, or are but like was stated earlier, those lower performing and struggling groups that still have achievement to gain, unless we get to blue, we're not going to get them caught up. So now, look here, when you get to our growth. So we are also very, very pleased with our growth. We have been blue. So even the ELA on the, on the original slide, the first was red, and we were red last year as well, but we are consistently blue in our growth. Last year, our growth for math was red. So we've really made some gains in our math. And the, even the achievement of math and the PSSA in the original slide, even though it's still red, we did make growth in that as well. And then of course, on our science, we're always doing very well with that. So just like the other buildings, we're. Is attributing to our, our challenges? What is it that we're, that's working well? And so we want to, we want to celebrate what we're. From individual buildings, but we all take responsibility for this, and we all support each other and help each other out. And that's what's so critical and it's a blessing to have a team where we look at this and we will figure out what's working well somewhere and then that's, and then put those people together. So we're looking to, at least at our building, we, we've got teams of teachers and staff members who are like, we want to get out and we want to see the successes. So we're, we're asking our teachers to open up their classrooms. We, we're going to set up a system to get in and observe and, or visit, excuse me, not observe, but a, but visit and see what's happening, open their classrooms up where they think they're doing things well, or we have data to show that they're doing well, and invite other teachers in and just really have the conversation. So we're happy.
Mr. Cobb couldn't be here tonight, so North Salem Elementary, as you. Language Arts is seventy point five, so they are, they are not quite at the statewide 2030 goal. Point six. And again, they're not quite at that 2030 goal, which is what would put them into blue. In science, they're at eighty-five point nine. And their growth, however, is a hundred percent in all three subject areas. And I do have a few words from Mr. Cobb here, so I want to quote him directly. He said, North Salem Elementary was one of only three public schools in the state of Pennsylvania to receive a score of one hundred percent growth in all three tested subject areas using the Future Ready Index. Our school received an SPP score of eighty-eight point eight. It's the highest score we have received since the release of School Performance Profile. The teachers and core team developed a comprehensive list of instructional strategies and programs that we believe led to, to our results. Our idea was to create a blueprint, which he has in quotes, as we now have the challenging task of sustaining our. Salem Elementary recognized that our results are a result of many efforts from many different stakeholder groups, students, parents, teachers, custodians, transportation, administration, school board, et cetera. All of these groups assisted us with every student, every day, whatever it takes. So that is North Salem. And certainly, last but not least, Mrs. Huffnagle.
That's a hard act to follow.
I know. We're not even here.
Well, you can see we still have a little work to do in ELA. We're, we're, we're making strides. Our teachers continue to work on, on the CUD documents, and they're going through curriculum, and I know we're going to get there in ELA. We're, we're moving through, projected to be proficient in math, and are, we're doing wonderful things in science. You want to click to the next one for me?
I sure can.
All right. So a lot to be proud of right here. One hundred percent of growth in both ELA and science. And. Dr. Maloney is instrumental in, as well as Mrs. Snyder, in helping our math teachers kind of. But in our PVA's in ELA, in 2018, we were red in ELA. And this year, in nineteen, we are dark blue. And in math, we went from red to green, and our SPP went up almost thirteen points. So we have a lot of things to celebrate as well.
So I apologize for the length of that presentation, but we really feel good about the information and, and wanted to share that with everyone and celebrate. So if anyone has any questions, we.
And can I add again? We, we appreciate the board's indulgence of this. Every piece of data that came out got better and better. And we were so excited, and we're so excited to share this with. Because curriculum, assessment, instruction, culture, you're hearing the same thing from us every single. Nancy, we are staying the course, and it is showing. And I, we, we, we believe that next year, we, you're, we are thrilled where we are.
I have one question. With the possibility of the realignment, the sixth graders leaving, everything like that, how is that going to affect your greens, blues, all of your growth with pulling the sixth graders out, putting them up in the middle school?
Well, and that's the trickiest grade span right now. So it's difficult to find true middle schools, you know, because they're really six through eight. We, we are a rare seven, eight school. So it, the system itself does help you locate those schools, and sometimes depending on what reports you look at, our sixth graders are thrown in there, but not on anything that you saw today. So it really won't affect it. It'll, the system will adjust wherever those students are, and they'll just be in a six through eight grade span.
We just won't be able to.
What's some of the background and why our students score so high in the science arena? What, what do you?
Science is one of the areas where the, there's, we're still on the legacy standards. The standards haven't changed, so those standards have been around for a long time. If you recall, four years ago, the standards, we went to the core. Well, science is, is still on the old standards. Now there's talk of Pennsylvania realigning the science standards to the next generation standards, which would then probably be a new assessment for science as well. But that's the main reason that I, I think we continue to have that.
Is that pretty much across the board for a lot of schools and they're scoring high? And it's not like we're, we're unique in that's, in that standpoint that our kids are?
Correct. Science is one of the higher ones at the elementary and at fourth and eighth.
Okay.
But I would say that that's the main reason. I don't know if you.
I just want to echo what Mrs. Krems said, and I also wanted to follow up. You had said you're feeling pretty good right now, and everybody should. He's been working hard to get to that point, so that's wonderful. I think, Mr. Perkins, we have a story to tell here now, you know? It's a very positive one, and let's. Thank you.
Great, thanks. I wish I could whistle between my teeth, because I would do it right now.
We'll move on to our first public comment period of the night. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If you have anything you would like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay, we'll move into Board President's Communication. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting. We began the session tonight with the opportunity to spend some time with our candidate for the high school principal position, Mrs. Fasick, and the. Work to follow up on there. That's looking really good. So expectations are high now. We did also discuss some personnel matters, as well as some agenda items as well. And speaking of that, we will move on to that next item, which is the DAEA grievance. And at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Benko. Okay, we will move on now to the approval of the minutes. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen board meeting.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion of second, and. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October seventeenth, two thousand nineteen board planning meeting.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on the minutes? Mrs. Benko. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda for the evening. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussions on the items in tonight's consent agenda? Have three retirements up for approval tonight, with almost fifty years of service to the district. Thirty-five of those are from Mrs. Met. And then sadly, Mrs. Gross. She got excited when she heard we had a high school principal candidate, and she's out the door. So she has a big smile on her face tonight for this.
I think we need to pull that item off.
Any questions on anything else?
I enjoyed my three, almost two years of faculty work at the [inaudible].
Well, thank you for coming and helping us to get where we've been headed now with those colors, too. Appreciate your input there.
I wanted to, to maybe talk just briefly about the Act One Resolution, just to make sure that everybody in our community is clear about what that Act One Resolution is all about. Every year, the state comes out with benchmarks that we, we have to, as school districts, operate under through a variety of factors. They list a benchmark that we cannot exceed when it comes time to setting our budgets in, in terms of tax increase. Every year, we get to this point in time, we have to, you know, approve that process. What that means is we can't go or we can't unless we take it to a referendum through, to a popular vote. That doesn't mean that we're locked in or that we're planning to raise it to that level. That is just our, our benchmark with which we cannot exceed. So I saw some, some posts in, on Facebook that says we're, we're doing that, that the three point six was, was the, the tax increase that's being floated. That is not the case. So this is just the preliminary number that the state says you can't go above. So just so that the community is understanding and everyone here also understands what that is about.
Also wanted to note, under the donations category tonight, we do have two donations coming into the district. Donations is to provide services for families in need within the district. So I want to thank them for their generosity with those donations, too. Welcome, Mrs. Fasick.
Thank you very much. I am so excited, especially after what I see was presented tonight, but I've also been seeing as I've been watching and following Dover. I'm very excited to be a part of the community. I'm very excited to be a part of the community. And I'm I'm really looking forward to coming and working with all of you and the wonderful administrative team. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So that's
I was hoping for.
Great. Well, welcome. Okay, we'll move on. Human and Fiscal Resources, anything else?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Capital Project Steering Committee, we do have three change orders to vote on tonight, so I would like to ask Mr. Nelson to come up and walk us through those change orders before we vote on them, if we could. How about, I'm going to call for the motions and then discussion, and you can explain each one then. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Change Order Number Two for Myco Mechanical.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Nelson.
Okay. I'll get myself organized. So Myco Mechanical is a change order for $2,876.31, and it is a revision to some equip, basically, this one's a revision that we did to some equipment locations and some different equipment for CTE
of placement of where to be able to plug them in and everything. And the size. On the plumbing site, sorry, I know you have an electrical one, too. Yeah, on the plumbing.
Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko? Okay.
Excuse me. I thought we did not need to have board approval on ones that were under $10,000. Or what was it?
So we have the authority to approve them. We just like to make sure that you're aware that we are making some of these changes. So as with, for example, budget transfers, fund balance designations, we
Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Change Order Number Three for Lowbar Inc.
No move.
Motion and a second, Mr. Nelson and Mr. Benton.
This, again, is a change order for Lowbar Incorporated Electrical Division for 11 seven cents. It coincides with the first one. It is changes to equipment that we purchased and upgraded in the electrical side for the CTE department.
Questions? Okay, Mrs. Benko? And then at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Change Order Number Eight for York Excavating Company LLC.
Okay. Oh, good. Sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Nelson's all excited over here to tell us about that one, so we'll move on to that.
This change order's for York Excavating for $9,014.27, and this is actually for North Salem Elementary. Field over there, and in conjunction with that, we're adding a parking lot and a wider driveway to get around back. In the process of installing a driveway, we experienced some very soft, unsuitable wet soils. So we needed to go down about three feet, take all the bad soil out, put some, you know, ballast stone in and some smaller stone, and then top it off with blacktop eventually. So that's what this work order covers.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
With that unsuitable soil, by doing the ballast stone and such, are we down far enough that you
Yes.
And they believe that it's going to be stable, and they're not going to have any sinkage issues?
Yes, we did a geotech compaction study on it as we were, when we were digging. So we knew when we got to solid ground.
Anybody else? Okay, Mrs. Benko? On now to the Dover Eagle Foundation. The foundation did meet earlier this month, continued their discussions regarding the fundraising opportunities that they have coming to add to that.
Nope.
Good. Unity Council, Mrs. Mailey.
I was actually not at the meeting, but Kirsten was kind enough to send me the notes from it. So it looks like they started off with a unity activity, watched a video and kind of debriefed on their thoughts about that. I don't know if you want to highlight anything about that, if it's necessary.
No.
Okay. Then they went and moved on to talk about building level unity activities, particularly in Dover Elementary, how the Stanford Harmony lessons and activities are being used. Some debriefing in terms of talking about having the support staff more involved, because they certainly make a difference. Kind of closing some of the social, emotional learning before we move on to helping our students. And then it looks like Live Elementary will to keep recruiting, get more community and parent involvement, and maybe have some of the staff at the that might be interested in joining that group. And also working on some outreach and visibility within the district and the community.
Any questions for Mrs. Mailey? Okay. York Adams Academy, Mr. Emick.
According to the report from last week, Dover has eighteen seats, and we have half of them filled. So we have nine open seats, that we should try and do our best to fill those as well. And our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November the 26th.
Questions for Mr. Emick. Okay, York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter.
Couple small things. They did start the gymnasium. It's progressing without any issues at this point. Second, we were presented with the budget. Found it to be a very agreeable contract, or, sorry, budget from them, so we will be voting next month.
Okay, Mrs. Krim, LIU.
Mrs. Guyer and I are on the Special Ed Task Force for the IU, and met this past week. The task force and the IU have worked on a fair share agreement that you have every year in your agreements with your special ed classes you have with them. And they have done a really nice job, the IU has done a really nice job to break the costs down for us. Previous to this new fair share agreement, we would just be told that an emotional support class costs $24,000. Now we're given, what does the $24,000 entail, which is big. And it's allowing us to question decisions they're making and, you know, really kind of learning how they run their programs. So we're very pleased, this is with the new executive director, we're very pleased with the new executive director. He's been great.
Questions for Mrs. Krim. Okay, Mr. Ralhauser, Legislative and York Learning Center.
No report.
Big talk, sorry, big talk this week. The House is voted on yesterday, House Bill 1800, which is sponsored by Speaker of the House, Mike Turzai, is a voucher bill that was passed out of committee yesterday. It was supposed to have been brought before the House for a vote today. I haven't gotten the update of the status of that bill today. So that is the big issue at hand. I'm trying to see if I can pull the vote up now, but I'll let you know. But it's something that PSBA is concerned about.
Any questions for Mrs. Brenton? Ms. Herman and the Dover Industrial Development Committee.
Yes. The township is also doing a comprehensive plan right now. After of their comprehension, comprehensive plan, they have said that a workforce development is and will continue to be a significant need for Dover area. Dover is projected to grow, on average, an additional 270 persons per year, which will require additional workforce development training. And a lot of our, a lot of people leave the community during the day and they go outside to work. So we're looking at ways that we can create a stronger workforce within our own district, excuse me, within the township. So we need to create a thriving workforce development program. And there's two points under that. We can coordinate with the York County Economic Alliance to determine how their pathways to prosperity, what I mean, workforce development program could enhance Dover's CTE program and initiatives. And also foster an environment that supports academic in the education chapter. And these would include three points. Foster creative exchanges between Dover School District Mr. Benton. So I'm turning it over to him now.
So a lot of the things that are being brought up on that is being addressed by York County Economic Alliance and that prosperity proposal that they're going to be unleasing here very shortly. So we've been working with them, with the township, for the past four or five years. And within this proposal, looking at what we can do to help sustain our workforce development here in our community. The township is actually driving to bring more businesses in here. So there'll be continuing talks. I know Ms. Krim and I have a meeting set in December.
And Mrs. Johnson is joining us, because it's on the comprehensive plan, and it also includes volunteer is in the Dover Township and Borough. So, yep, we're part of the conversation, which is wonderful.
To our superintendent's report, Mrs. Krim.
First, a big thank you to Dover Elementary for their wonderful presentation tonight and the beautiful artwork around you. Very nice. Enjoyed the pumpkins, because I'm sure they're coming down pretty soon. I'd also like to kind of highlight something that was on my Friday Focus and Weekly Report. Mrs. Gross and I had the privilege of attending last Thursday night, a meeting in, I'm looking for the name, Skills USA meeting in Gettysburg, where Mr. Benton was named the Administrator of the Year for the entire state of Pennsylvania. So I just wanted to highlight that. That was just a huge thing for not only Mr. Benton, but our district. So very, very proud of that. And just a couple reminders to you, the Fall Play is tomorrow night. A reminder, the board reorganization meeting is going to be followed by trauma-informed training by Mrs. Johnson immediately after. Don't forget about the annual turkey dinner giveaway. You got the email. If you want to join us, email Katie back. And the numerous concerts that happen in December, they're all over the district, and they're wonderful.
Questions for Mrs. Krim? Okay, next is our miscellaneous period for any other comments or observations from our board members. Does anybody else have anything?
I just wanted to comment two things. Echo the comments that have just been made about the Dover Elementary kids. To sit and then listen to those kids talk and put a presentation like that together, that really speaks volumes to how successful our kids are being trained as they learn. There's some bright, bright kids there. So that's very rewarding to see that. So that's a lot of fun. We can sit and listen to that, you know, all night. So thanks for that. Also, one of the things that we approved tonight in the consent agenda was our comprehensive plan. For those who have read it, it's a lot of reading. There's a lot there. There's a lot of work that went into that. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, everybody involved with that are, I wanted to say thank you for all the work that's been put into that. That was a very detailed document there for us to move forward with. So thank you for that.
Anybody else? I'd just like to ask the board members if we could stay for a few moments after tonight's meeting for a brief executive session with Mrs. Krim and Dr. Maloney. So if you could plan to stay. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our last public comment period. This is a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If you have anything you would like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay, we'll move on to our future meeting announcements, which are not listed in the agenda here, but I know we have meetings on Thursday. This week, we have our committees beginning at 6:00 PM and our planning meeting at 7:00 PM. And then, as Mrs. Krim mentioned, we do have our reorganization meeting in December. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye? Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you.